So I'll call the Regional School Committee to order. Tonight, we have two meetings happening and we have more people than we've probably ever had before. Love seeing all these people here. So I'm going to briefly talk about the format for tonight. Our first meeting is the Regional School Committee meeting, which we have just called to order. And that agenda will have public comment. At the end of that public comment period, I will call that meeting to a close and we will open the public hearing on the budget. At the public hearing on the budget, that's an opportunity for anyone here in the public to ask questions about the finances. We will then, at the end of that, close that public hearing and reopen the Regional School Committee meeting, where we will have an additional discussion about details on the budget and a few other agenda items. For those who have never been to a school committee meeting before, public comment, you stand, say your name. For teachers, say your affiliation, which school you're from. We sort of ask that you spend maybe two to three minutes on whatever it is you would like to discuss. And if someone else is following you and feels that they have the same comments to make, we ask that you sort of keep that brief and say, "I agree with Renee, Keith, Laura, whoever's saying it." So with that said, I will call for public comment and ask if we have any tonight.
Sure, I'll go first. Members of the school committee, superintendent, fellow educators, I'm at 150 of you, taxpayers, students watching at home, and other members of the committee, I'm Keith Valentine Kaplan, president of the DSEA and a history teacher at the high school. I'm here with my colleagues today to share with you what is going on as we bargain for a new contract for the more than 200 members of our local union. I'm going to be concise. This is an overview of what is going on. I'm leaving the bulk of our remarks, about 10 minutes total, to colleagues who will each briefly share with you their stories. For us, the number one job and the number one concern is to provide, to provide the highest quality education for our students. The people here with me work extremely hard doing that, investing the hours it takes, investing the hours it takes outside of the school day to make sure that our students are prepared for what they will face when they leave here. Our results, the students that we graduate, prove that our efforts are successful. To continue to do this, our schools need to continue to attract and retain the best teachers by offering pay and benefits that are on par with those of other high-achieving In recent contract negotiations, we have collaborated with elected officials to do just that. With little or no publicity, we have negotiated collaboratively, considering the pay and benefit packages of the districts with which both school committee members and we compare ourselves. The issue is that, under the current contract, our projected earnings over a typical career are now over $100,000 less than many of our comparable districts. To us, the path forward is clear. We need to increase our pay over the next three years at a rate greater than our comparable districts are increasing their pay. Accordingly, we have looked at the increases recently negotiated in other districts. They are, on average, increasing around 2% per year. We have proposed increases over the next three years of 3%, 3%, and 3.25%, bringing us closer to where we think we belong, given quantitative considerations such as our school's rankings and things that are harder to measure. School committee members have proposed salary increases less than those of the increases already agreed to by our comp districts. We are here because we want the public to know how things are going and why we think that they are not yet going well. Thank you.
Well, hello and thank you for allowing me to speak. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Renee Maring. Renee Grady. Oh, I changed my name. I worked at the Dover School Systems for over 17 years. Prior to that, I was in business. I've taught first grade, I've taught third grade, and now I live in fourth grade at the children's. I have to say, teaching in Dover's been wonderful. Over this time, I've developed lifelong connections with families and children that I know that I've impacted not only their education, but who they are and who they'll grow up to be. So what am I here to talk about? Something that all of us in here are asking for. Contract increases that will bring our salaries closer to those in comparable towns that we're looking for. In figuring out to say, I kind of thought about a lesson plan and thought of my audience and I decided that maybe the best way to illustrate my point was maybe to talk by comparing schools with businesses. So, as we all know, teachers don't deal with widgets. We deal with children. Our successes aren't measured in dollars, while some say they're measured in test scores and house values. We know it's not that. It's more about the child in front of us. Not only their academic growth, but their ability to navigate the world socially and emotionally. When a school is ranked as number one, like Dover Sherburne often is, it doesn't come with an influx of cash that increases our budget and translates into quality bonuses or promotions. Raises aren't calculated based on profits. They're based on budgets. And because of previous and future budget constraints, we now have a problem. Like Keith mentioned, Dover and Sherburne salaries are behind comparable school districts like Wellesley, Whalen, Concord Carla, Weston, and Weston again. And the past six years, they've surpassed us, is really where we are. So what we're asking for from you now is a fair and equitable contract, like our competitors have received. It doesn't seem exorbitant. They don't do that in my classroom. It doesn't seem exorbitant. It seems fair and well-deserved. So I ask that you all encourage your members of your negotiation team to make decisions that respect and support teachers.
This is overwhelming. Hi, my name is Carol Spazano and I'm a guidance counselor in my ninth year at Dover Sherburne High School. First, let me say, and I know I speak for my colleagues, about how proud I am to say that I work for Dover Sherburne Schools. No matter where I go, whenever I'm asked where I work, I always smile before I respond because I know that inevitably, the response when I say Dover Sherburne High School is always the same. It's, "Wow, really? What an amazing school system." And of course, I agree, wholeheartedly. I know firsthand what a great school system it is. One of the best, if not the best, in Massachusetts. But of course, we are biased. I, like Renee, didn't start out in education. I worked in business for about 15 years. So I didn't know very much about public education, except for what I'd heard. Short days, summers off, this looks like a good gig. While we do have a shorter year than some, I can assure you that from the moment we walk in in the morning, it's go time and we are on. Period after period, hour after hour, and well beyond the bell, teachers are working diligently. And trying to think in business terms also, like Renee, I liken a day of teaching to giving four and five presentations a day, maybe hour after hour, perhaps on topics that are not the same time after time. And to an audience that ranges from our really strongest students to our most challenging learners and everything in between. Trying to keep that group engaged and inspired day after day and hour after hour, it's pretty intense. Every day's intense. And because we're working with kids, you never really know what you're going to get, but you need to be ready for anything and everything. So I think we all feel like we are teachers, coaches, mentors, mediators, advisors, role models, friends, advocates, and cheerleaders. But we also consider ourselves to be very fortunate that we work for Dover Sherburne Schools, because we have amazing students who we genuinely adore and we have wonderfully supportive parents. And that's important. So that's why it's hard to enter into negotiations and have these discussions about compensation and other contract items. It's uncomfortable for many of us to talk about compensation, especially with people who are not our direct supervisors, who may not really know what we do, and not often know how well that some of us really do it. But here we are. So instead of repeating what Renee and Keith have already shared, the bottom line is that right now, we aren't comparable. We have fallen behind and it will only worsen if it's not addressed. So we hope that we can count on your support to get DS back to the place where we all
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Millad and I'm in my 15th year of teaching social studies at the high school. And I'm in fact a product of the Dover Sherburne educational community. I grew up in Sherburne. I attended Pine Hill School from first grade onward. I attended what was then known as the junior high, and I attended and graduated from the high school. I've heard it said before that people who go into teaching are oftentimes people who loved being students and who are looking for a way to extend the educational experience into their professions. And I really do think for myself, this is true. And I know for myself that my love of learning and my love of education started here in these schools and was shaped by the amazing group of teachers I had over the years. And since I've started as a teacher at DS, I've actually been privileged to work alongside many of these very same teachers. And although in the 15 years that have passed, many of those teachers have retired, I still actually do get to work with a few of them. DS teachers exemplify professionalism. They're experts in their subject matter and they know how to deliver it to students in a way that inspires. We are dedicated to our classes and we know our students as individuals. And the Dover Sherburne community is one that's really built around the shared value of respect. And it's respect for the whole learning process that comes through in respect that's shown between teachers and students, respect amongst the staff. And this modeled respect encourages genuine respect between students. And then there's, of course, the respect that's felt both ways between the teachers and the community. And I remember being a first-year teacher, and this was a time when I felt as though I was barely keeping my head above water. And the end of every day came with this immense sense of accomplishment and relief. And then the inevitable accompanying sense of almost dread when I realized what I had to do with all over again the next day before 8:00 in the morning. I remember really being struck by my more experienced colleagues, who weren't having to work like I was just to stay afloat, but who were working extremely hard at honing their craft. They were developing new curriculum, they were finding new ways to engage and inspire students, and they were making and keeping the learning really relevant. And these teachers provided an example to which I could aspire. And they also showed me exactly what it meant to devote a lifetime career to being a teacher at DS. And they also showed me just why my time here as a student had been so very special. In the last six years, I've been disappointed at the handling of the salary matrix. And for me personally, this coincided with a time in my life when I was planning for the costs associated with the new family, with homeownership, for building upon that family. But I was also really concerned at the fact that the colleagues I had who were in the latter part of their careers were effectively seeing their real income stagnate and even potentially fall because they hadn't received an adequate cost of living increase. So today, I'm wearing red in support of all these teachers and I'm proud to be, you know, on the staff with. And I'm also asking for your support as we negotiate our next contract. A contract that we really feel needs to provide a decent cost of living raise for all teachers and a salary matrix that recognizes and respects the outstanding caliber of teacher that's always been drawn to DS and that's helped to make DS the great place it is.
Great. So on behalf of the Regional School Committee and even the school committee members who are negotiating, who aren't here this evening, who's not on the region, I want to thank all of you wholeheartedly for coming tonight. I think all of us appreciate hearing what you've had to say and seeing everyone who's here tonight. We are working diligently to come to a mutually agreed contract and we look forward to our next negotiation, which is Thursday evening in this room. So thank you very much for coming and we'll see you Thursday.
Thank you.
Judy, will you just take a short break while they're...
I grew up on that. It's pale. No.
Keep rolling. Oh, it's breaking down, Percy. It's crazy, crazy. My hair got blonde. Are you kidding us? Oh! Ah! I know. Judy, what happened? All your friends left.
It's nice to see some of the elementary school teachers.
I'm nine in the storm tonight.
Hello, Mary, welcome.
Thanks. I was late.
Thank you.
I apologize. Just like throwing away obviously.
Now we're alone again.
Wasn't that fun when they were all here? No one loves us anymore. So I will call the Regional School Committee to a close for the moment and open the public hearing. I might go stand over there just to use this protector as we have no audience.
Do you want us to pull the table back?
No, 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 no. It's right, I'm going right behind the skeleton. Why don't you stand up there? I'll click. No problem. Are you sure? Yeah. Yeah, so I think it's just on that.
That's a blur. Public comment, let's start.
So no peanut gallery down that side? So tonight is the public hearing on the FY18 regional budget. And before I get started, I wanted to say a wholehearted thanks to Mr. McCullough, Mr. Vitori, the administrative team, school committee members, who have spent numerous hours thinking about it, discussing about it, drawing conclusions, reshaping those conclusions that allowed us to get to a budget this evening. Remind everyone of our mission. I think the teachers who were just here earlier spoke to this about the Dover Sherburne Schools sharing the mission to inspire, challenge, and support all students as they discover and pursue their full potential. As we pulled together the budget, we focused on and needed to review and revise educational services as appropriate. We needed to evaluate and maintain our facilities. We need to remain fiscally responsible and mindful of the financial constraints on which we find ourselves, whether that's federal or state funds, funds that come from both of the town to support the district. As always, we need to comply with federal and state mandates and we need to fund contractual We had guidance from both Dover and Sherburne. Dover's guidance can be summed up as level services and Sherburne's guidance is level-funded with a reserve for new initiatives and healthcare. I will make a side note that both towns and the selectmen in Sherburne, I believe, have voted no override. So there is no appetite in either district for an override. This year, as we look at the final numbers that we'll see shortly, we looked at what's driving the increase of our FY18 budget. Our enrollment remains constant for the foreseeable future. Healthcare and related benefits make up 50% of the FY18 increase and the balance being collective bargaining and contractual obligations. In FY18, we're seeing some new and needed educational services that are based on our student population. The first of those being a life skills program to support students using an in-district model. Those are those students who are high school age to age 22. That program will need one additional special education teacher. The language-based program that has been running at the middle school and the high school, we will need an additional special language-based teacher at the high school to follow some of our students to the high school and support the number of students in that building. We will also be sharing a board-certified behavior analyst with the Dover and Sherburne districts, and that person will be a .1 FTE at the region. Again, aligning service delivery and supporting IEPs. This coming year, we hope to implement a transition program to support students who will be re-entering school after a prolonged absence. At our January meeting, we listened to a presentation about that program and an estimate that over the course of the year, probably about 10% of our population could make use of this program next year. The costs associated with that, many will be picked up by a grant or community support. There will be an additional education assistant that's in the numbers you see on the next slide. So as we look at the regional schools FY18 budget and ensuing statutory assessment, you'll note that in FY18, the operating balance of $20,149,466 is a 4.58% increase over the previous year. When you look at the debt, you'll see that overall that's going down 9.93%. And we will be using $199,000 of our FY17 funds to pay off the last year of the bands at the region. And that is going to pay for the air conditioning that was done here at the middle school and capital items. So the end result is a 3% increase in the assessments. And as you can see, Dover's assessment will go up 4.35% and Sherburne's 1.5%. And for those listening who aren't here, that assessment is a formula and part of that is based on the number of students in your town attending the regional campus. We're providing everyone with the information on revenue projections. Our revenue will include in the FY18 budget $137,290, which is additional Chapter 70 money that we received in FY17 after the time that we set the budget. So that will be used to offset our expenses. In FY18, like our previous years, we've used the onsite insight report to come up with what capital items need to be repaired, maintained, addressed in the upcoming year. You'll see that that total is $364,000 and includes things like ADA-compliant doors, locker room laboratory, waste line, concrete repairs, and other items around the regional campus. These items are being funded by an intermunicipal agreement between Dover and Sherburne, as we have in the last few years as well. We also like to note that the community investment, we accepted here at Regional School Committee many gifts this year from Boosters, DSEF, FOPA Positive PTO, the Mudge Foundation, Needham Bank, private donations, smaller company donations. And as always, we are ever grateful for that additional support for our school districts. And that is the brief overview of the operating and capital budgets of the region. And do we have any public comments or questions? Hearing none will close the public hearing and reopen the Regional School Committee, which is the IMA. Do you want to do that, Mr. McCullough?
Clear. Anything, I do one?
So you received in your packet, or actually in the packet for the February 9th, which
actually became the February 15th, meaning meeting day. You received copies of the intermunicipal agreement for FY18 along with copies of the memos that were sent to both boards of selectmen. Both boards of selectmen have approved and signed off on the FY18 IMA. The Dover Selectmen did so on February 2nd. The Sherburne Board did so on February 23rd. So what is being asked of the committee tonight is to approve the intergovernmental agreement for FY18. And we do have, we can do this right at the end of the meeting, we have three copies that are originals that we were asked you to sign. And then they'll be executed, we'll execute them by sending them back to the two communities. The committee's been through this, this is year four of this process. So I think everyone is familiar with how that works.
So we don't have to vote anything? Or do we vote to accept it?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll invite a motion to accept the intergovernmental agreement as submitted in your packet. And we don't have Carol, so can someone just, Dana, do you mind just noting that the motion? Yep. So Richard, I mean, right. Yep. Oh, Amy will get it off the table. No problem, just in case. Yep. Those in paper? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a discussion and vote to certify the FY18 operating budget. As you all know, we've been working on this budget, both at the administrative level and the school committee level, for a number of months now. The budget that was presented tonight in the public hearing is the budget reflects the budget adjustments and discussion that occurred at our last meeting. And I think that just a couple of things I wanted to just add is that, no, I'm thinking of something else. I think I'm good. I think it's time for you to have discussion and opportunity to ask questions and make comments.
You have one. On the bright program, I know that this year, it's cheap, but it becomes more expensive for us as we've gone on. And school committee obviously has recognized that in our discussions. I don't think there's anything else in the budget that has that future cost associated with it. Am I right that this is the only thing we're adding that is cheap this year, but is going to get more expensive as we run?
You are correct. And in your packet you received, I think, go one more page.
Right now, it's in here. Yeah, you got it.
And so the way that the... The budget that was presented tonight in the public hearing is the budget reflects the budget adjustments and discussion that occurred at our last meeting. And I think that, just a couple of things I wanted to just add is that... No, I'm thinking of something else. I think I'm good. I think it's time for...
You're thinking of another district.
You to have discussion and opportunity to ask questions and make comments.
You have one. On the Bright program, I know that this year it's cheap and it becomes more expensive for us as we've gone on. And the school committee obviously has recognized that in our discussions. I don't think there's anything else in the budget that has that future cost associated with it. Am I right that this is the only thing we're adding that is cheap this year but is going to get more expensive as we run?
You are correct.
Okay.
And in your packet you received, I think, go one more page. And so the way that the, this one. The way that we intend to apply for the grant, which, by the way, the grant application process is now open. Deadline for submitting applications is March twenty-ninth, I believe. And we would expect to have an answer by sometime late April, according to what we're being told. Ellen will be attending a workshop that Metro West Health provides for those who intend to write a grant. What you see on the projection is, again, an incremental cost to fully fund over the next four years.
Any other questions? Michael?
On the, back to the fifth or sixth slide around the expansion of staffing in the special education area, is that, at a summary level, is that going to bring, again, students who are already out of district back in from either of the two towns' budgets? Is it to support students who are transitioning at grade five? What's the mix there?
So I think it's a mix of all of those. And I'll briefly comment, and then Chris, you can expand on that. In terms of the, in terms of the learning-based program, we are projecting...
There's a language-based and there's a life...
Language-based program. That's a program that's been in place now for about four years. We have had students come into that program from our elementary schools. Initially, when it was first created, there were some, there were, I forget the exact number, three or four?
Two.
Two students that came back from Sherburne as we started that program. The program has grown to the point where we have one teacher who had two educational assistants who are servicing the students between both middle school and high school. We'll have a bug-and-even split next year between middle school and high school students. And in order to provide, really, the services at the high school level that we really need to provide, the proposal would call for the additional teacher in the program to be housed in each of the two buildings, so one at the middle school and one at the high school. We...
That's to support the existing census, and that's not going to impact any potential existing out-of-district placements?
Well, it might. And part of the, part of the challenge in expanding and creating these positions is sometimes you have, there are students available who will enter these programs. Sometimes you need to create them and have them in place.
A field of dreams scenario.
Yes, so people will create, will take that opportunity. For the life skills program, I think it's fair to say that the life skills program, we have a teacher in place at the middle school. And by creating this program at the high school, I think it's fair to say that there's a very, very high percentage that there will be at least one student who will be returning to the district. But this family is actually waiting to see if, in fact, the program will be creating it. So we feel pretty good about that.
Do we have any students that are in district that will be transitioning from the middle school up to the high school and also be...
Not for next year, but we have, we have that middle school student who will transition in two years into the high school. And we are optimistic that we'll see the same kind of movement from the elementary schools into the middle school program. The life skills program is not a program that will see the kinds of numbers eventually that the language-based program will be, because it is more of a low-incentive program. But certainly, over time, you know, in places where I've been, I would tell you that in Winchester High School, the last year I was there, we had probably eight students, maybe even nine, in the high school life skills program. At the middle school, we had a similar number.
Do those students end up in kind of a partial inclusion environment, or are they substantially separate?
Oh, well, Chris, respond to that.
Those, these particular students that we're projecting for the life skills program are really students who will not be earning a high school diploma, so their inclusion opportunities may be more related to elective classes, the social environment of the high school. And then they may, an individual student may audit a class for the participation or the experience at a different level, but not for the academic rigor of the classes.
Do we have other budget questions? Mary?
I have an informational question with regard to the life skills program. I'm wondering, very often, an expensive placement will be, what I assume, maybe that type of education for post-twelve grade students. And I'm wondering if there's any thought or consideration to perhaps filling some of those post, I call them post-high schools, or post-grade twelve placements in district? In other words, instead of having a student move on from here once this program is here, to a more expensive residential, whatever, placement, or even expensive day placement, is there any thought to continuing?
No.
Sure.
So the transition program from eighteen to twenty-two is often dramatically different from the experience of a high school that we currently are operating under, so the ninth through twelfth grade experience. The students who need the transition program from eighteen to twenty-two need a lot of community-based experiences. So the benefit to creating the life skills program at the high school is that when those, when these students age into that realm, we will have them in our community so that their transition experiences become community-based transition experiences. So I foresee the students staying in our community, but us needing perhaps a contract with a job coach or a contract with one of our tech collaboratives to bring in some of the expertise that we would need around that level of programming. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work-based, community-based experiences that build that rich experience of transition for kids.
I was just curious.
Sure, sure.
You know, as we...
So conceptually, though, that is the intent of this program?
Absolutely, right.
Is to keep the students post-grade twelve here and not having them go to a placement to receive the transitional services.
And that's realistic in a community that has so few of the normal things that most communities have, right, you know, next door to their schools? I mean, I think, I mean, we're just so remote from job and internship or those types of experiences.
Right. It would be, we would be reaching out, not just to the Dover-Sherburne community, but certainly to the contiguous community. So there are, certainly are opportunities in NADAC. There are certainly opportunities in Wellesley, in Needham, and Westwood.
Okay, it's harder to picture that than if you're in NADAC or Wellesley.
Sure, no, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
I mean, if I, if, may I? One of the things that students at that age range are doing are travel training. Well, we don't have a bus system available to our area, but we would still be teaching our students to access a shared ride and then get to a certain area within our community. So when you're in district, you're actually doing that work in your district, which is really rich for families.
Thank you, Kristen. Any other budget questions? No. So next would be a motion to certify the FY eighteen budget, correct?
Yes.
And I will read that motion out as a reminder. This is part of the regional agreement that we do it now. And as we say, it's the high watermark. If we make changes in our budget, it would be to a downward angle.
Can I start first, then? So, given that, given that the Bright program is budgeted based on receipt of a grant, what happens to our budget and this high watermark if we don't get the grant?
So that, what I would think would happen is, a couple of things could happen. If we hear prior to town meeting that we did not receive the grant, then we could, there could be a motion at town meeting to reduce the budget by the amount of the educational assistance. If, if we don't hear until after that...
I didn't understand that.
We would reduce it by that amount.
So the program wouldn't happen?
Well, that would be...
I think that's the first...
That would be one option.
Okay, yeah.
The other option, which I think is the more realistic option, is that the budget stays at the level that was voted, but we do not, we just won't fill that EA position. And ultimately, that money goes back, you know, to the, to the two communities through, you know, at some point at the end of the year.
Your assumption in both of those scenarios is that the program doesn't happen if we don't get the grant? Just want to make sure of that.
I think, yeah.
I think that's what we thought, absolutely.
And the way that this budget's structured, eighty thousand of spending is not in this budget, correct? It's off, in some little grant account?
Correct.
Okay.
Like a number of other grants.
So the, so the, that grant revenue is not projected into our revenue line for what budget we're voting on there?
It is not. It is not. And the regional committee will certainly accept the grant. You will have to vote to accept the grant if in fact you get it. I don't think that that will impact the budget. That that grant would be put in a separate fund and would fund...
It'd be like title of the money.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so the motion is the 2017-18 budget in the amount, the motion is to adopt the 2017-18 budget in the amount of $24,149,585, which is reduced by estimated receipts and available funds in the amount of $2930,000 and $930,152 for a net amount to be assessed to the member towns of $20,175,433. This assessment is comprised of $20,149,466 in operating expenses and $1,025,967 in debt expenses. And that the treasurer be authorized to certify this budget in the proportion share of each town based on the statutory method.
Can you repeat the assessment number?
It matches what's in the overview.
Number rating and debt. Got it. Okay.
Someone? Second? Any discussion? Go ahead.
I have to say, I'm, I'm still not comfortable that our operating expenses are increasing at a pace that's over five percent when we know at least one of our member towns cannot sustain that type of expense growth and the impact it would have on their assessment for any period of time. We just seem to be extremely fortunate that the way everything worked out this year, we're projecting Sherburne's assessment to only go up 1.5%. But even the, even the operating percentage component of that is, is close to three percent. And everything I've heard in meetings and conversations with advisory people is that the guidance they're giving us this year isn't going to necessarily change or improve or be more optimistic in future years. And then we also had a very spirited set of input during our community comments section, and I don't want to make any comments specific to the contract negotiation. I think that's appropriate for executive session at this point still. But that only raises my concern level. So I just don't, I'm not comfortable how we got to the final number, the use of E and D and the optimistic projections for, you know, the state delivering on a 20% increase in aid. So I still don't know whether I'm a yes or a no at this point.
Okay. Any other comments?
Does question? So Michael, as you contemplate whether it's yes or no, what would, what would you, what do you contemplate? How would you contemplate adjusting the budget that you would be more comfortable with?
I just don't see that we're really in an environment, a financial environment, that can support five percent operating expense growth. I mean, we're using P and D funds. We have changed our past practice around projecting state aid growth. We got a favorable shift in expenses from Sherburne to Dover based upon changes in the, you know, in the allocation formula. The MLC changed also to shift dollars from Sherburne to Dover. It's just a series of, of everything coming together to create a budget that we've heard that advisory is comfortable with. I just don't, and maybe we're comfortable saying, okay, this is this year and we won't worry about next year, and we won't worry about how the contract comes out. But I just don't, I don't see how we can support five percent operating growth. It's just our underlying financial structure isn't, isn't there.
Well, I think, I am not saying that we can sustain that ad infinitum either. I think that, I don't think any of us are. I think that what we would look towards is with next year, with Dr. Kio coming in to do some exercises, to look at some of the structural things in our cost structure and figure out what might be adjustable over time that can really move the needle on some of these things. But I think that those kind of exercises around, around many areas are not something that we're going to do in the next few weeks. And therefore, I think that, I feel comfortable with the budget that we have now being... Yes, I understand your concern about revenues, but that would just exacerbate the percentage if we, if we decrease that. And I'd like to see us go through the exercise over the upcoming year on things that can actually really move the needle on the budget. And that will be, to me, how we get away from a 4.58% increase year to year.
When can we have another conversation? It's an executive session that addresses the compensation issues that are in front of us. Because that's part of, I just feel hamstrung. There are other comments I'd like to make, but it's not appropriate for where we are and our process. Even though part of this process has suddenly become very public in ways that I, it's new to me as a school committee member.
So we will have a look at when, when to put an executive session to talk about?
Yeah, because I, I mean, what would happen, I just, again, it's hard to vote for a budget not even knowing what we would do in some scenarios of how the contract would turn out. And I haven't heard anything about how we...
Right, and I, Michael, I understand your uncertainty about that. But unfortunately, the budget process and the legal process about town meeting and voting for the budget is going to happen regardless of when the negotiation process is over. And I do think the administration and others have done a great job trying to continue providing the services and maintaining our facilities that are expected by our constituents, our students, our parents. And for this year, it's, we're, we're... It's, we're voting on this year. We're not voting on five years.
Well, but we're making decisions like adding a resource room that has a permanent multi-year impact, in fact, a growing one. So I don't think, I don't, I just don't buy into the fact that each year we can go like this and only look at the implications of this year and then we'll have a prayer on what will be next year. Will we be having either a regionally-based executive session or a joint executive session before Sherborne's and Dover's Town Financial Committee public meetings?
I don't have the date. I know there is a joint meeting, I think, on the calendar for April 11.
But one that's, that would work with our budget cycles, because I do feel like, again, this morning, this afternoon, today's meeting didn't give me a warm fuzzy on how this is going compared to past negotiations.
Michael, when is, when's the Sherborne advisory?
March 18.
March 18.
March 18.
18.
We have a meeting on March 14.
Yep.
Just the region not joined.
Not everybody, right. So we'll have some offline discussion on that.
I guess I would, I would say, only in response to one of your good points, is that this is the high watermark. This is necessarily where we come in and finally, as information, you know, comes out, comes in over the next month, we have a chance to adjust it. We don't think we are going to be safe where we are.
My experience has been, I've been told these are high watermarks and we have the vote and suddenly all discussion and activity. So, so I'm less, you know, without any, any rich conversation about what our other options are, if we were in that place already happening, makes me feel like what we're voting on is what we are committing to for resources for next year.
But at this time, we have no additional information.
I mean, there's no activity going on in part of the central office to, to propose anything alternative to a $20.4 million budget.
24.14.
24.14. Great. So are we ready to call for a vote?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. So those in favor of the motion on the table? Opposed? Thank you, Michael. We also, I believe, need to have a motion to utilize E and D. And I'll invite that motion. For the fiscal year 2018, budget shall include $137,290 as of the June 30th, 2017, certified excess and deficiency to reduce assessments. So moved? Further discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries on both counts. Consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of February 16th, 2017? Any comments?
Only that they need to spell Mr. Kellitt's name right in the top.
And I will invite a motion to approve the consent agenda. Michael and Richard, first and second? Those in favor? I'm all in favor.
Can I ask one question before?
Definitely. Definitely.
Technically, I think this chair went--
On the budget presentation, down at the end, there was this thing about involvement. I don't need to be walked through this, but I do look at the projections going out to 2020, 22, 23, and noted those last few years, there seems to be this extraordinary fluctuation from year to year. We're down 42, we're up 55, we're down 47. Is there anything other than just wacky modeling going on here? Is there some reason to think that these numbers mean something?
They're reflective of the grades below and what those numbers are.
So somewhere in one or the other, combined both of the schools, down at the elementary this morning, there's some extraordinarily small class bumped up against some extraordinarily large class.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, where do you see it going up and down?
Regional projection columns.
So Richard's probably at the elementary school when the housing market started to--
I just see it going down.
Goes down.
727 to 1082. Oh, 1082, thank you.
Yeah, I think--
Yeah, I think you haven't projected any growth in those--
Yeah.
No, there's no growth projected in the grade five to grade six. Those numbers reflect, those red numbers, for example, the 17, 18, 162 in red to the left, that's the number of fifth graders that are in the district this year. 176 is the number of fourth graders. 156 is the number of third graders, currently 32, et cetera. And it does not reflect the growth of those second, third, and fourth graders as they move through the elementary school. We would, we would project those that, I see what you're talking about, but that's the reason why.
It also doesn't reflect move-ins because we felt we're falling off the cliff. What's that? Oh, yeah, okay.
The growth is, it's based on this number, net number of students we have today with a zero net gain and a zero net loss in the subsequent years. And we know with at least second and third grade numbers, that is a, we almost always grow up from there. And even then retain them as they transition to the grade six.
Which is why the bubble that we thought was going to burst doesn't really burst.
Well, that, well, part of that was because, because we have very low numbers for, certainly for Sherborne and also for Dover, and they show the interval now starts showing up at second, third, and fourth grade.
Right. All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.